I believe you all read the backup material and are very familiar with this issue. I was made aware of this about two years ago, maybe plus or minus, I'm not really sure at this point. I've talked with many, many of the neighbors about this. I had two meetings with each of the county commissioners, with the exception of Commissioner Mayo, I only had one meeting with him. I've spoken with Mr. Eigelhardt from the Department of Environmental Protection. When we were up in Tallahassee, we had meetings with Mr. Blaylock, I brought this to his attention, up there. I've had a number of meetings with the Neighborhood Association, I had too many to count. And I have had, and that would involve people from all over the community, including the US Recycling, there were people attending at those meetings as well. And I've had numerous meetings with city staff, trying to figure this all out. So it's a bit of a puzzle, and I think there are some pieces missing. And I just want to walk us all through a little bit of the history of what we have in front of us. And if I'm going to try to put these things on the overhead as I go through, if you all will go to page 199, 189 to 199. And on the overhead, you can see a sort of timeline. I also would just like to say that I, of course, don't want to make any false statements. And so if I do say anything that is incorrect, Mr. Fournier, please jump in and stop me. And feel free, anyone, don't hesitate to correct me if I do say something that is not factual or accurate. But I did want to say that, so this is a sort of history from, we have in the backup material, this is 2012, 2013. Just take particular note to what is going on on the property here. So we have these little buildings there, some here, some there. A year later, you see a little bit more activity going on. Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. 14 is there. 15, that's 13. Here's 15, a little bit more. So this is sort of an area that starts to develop. 16, you can see it even gets even more. 17, again, you can see here. And here, it's starting to really get large. And then 20, 21. Here, here, here. And if you contrast those with 2012, you can see a difference. What I hear from a lot of the neighbors is that when they moved in, they knew about the recycling, the metal recycling, and the, you know, the cars and all of that, that this sort of developed over time. And it went from one activity to a completely different activity. And I do want to just also say that, maybe take note here to the road. I don't know if this has something to do with the function of the picture, but you can see here, it's like, it looks like a sort of a road, regular road, and over here, it's completely white. And if you go back through time, you can see that that starts to develop over time. So this is, you know, degradation of the road and the dust settling on the road. Okay. And if we could now move forward to page 170 and 171. These were submitted by a resident here. Right? And so the, this one here shows the piles over here from her house, who's contiguous to it, as does this one as well. And if you can switch now to page 106. And as far as I understand this puzzle, there are three authorities, governing authorities with this property. So you have the city, you have the county, and you have the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The city, our authority is over zoning compliance, the road, and a wall, that I believe that we require something like this to be, you know, in an opaque wall. As you all know, we are redoing that road. The road was really damaged, and it was very bumpy, so it would cause these trucks to sort of bounce around, kick up the dust, sort of making the situation worse. So we are repaving the road. The city staff is working on a wall, an opaque wall, I believe, and we're getting a variance for that as well. And then, and the zoning compliance, which was, their facilities have to be set back 100 feet, some of them weren't. Ms. Banica made a determination that facilities also means activity. So any activities had to be set back 100 feet. That's the city's purview, I think, pretty much, and we're acting on that. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection's purview is over environmental impacts and oversight. They ceded their authority to water and air quality, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, they ceded their authority to the county. So the county is actually the body that has been tasked with monitoring the water and air quality of this site. So if you go to page 106 and 107, you'll see that in 2001, about halfway down, it says that, "operating a non-metallic mineral processing plant crusher without first obtaining a permit." And they asked them to do a couple of things, to have a logbook, to get a permit, and to allow for inspection. And then it goes down to say, "these actions have since been completed." They were fined $5,500 and $1,000, and I believe they did pay that fine. So not that the county has not been doing anything, so you can see, they have. But then if you go to page, so they did pay that fine. But if you go to page 86 and 89. So I'll put this up here. So 86, here you can see that this was an inspection that was done in 101821. And you can see over here, it's marked "in compliance." Okay? That was an inspection that was done. And then if you go over to the next page, or two pages later, there's this narrative, which I'm going to have to take away from the monitor to read. It says, "at the time of the inspection, the facility's rock crusher and X-Tech screening equipment were not in operation." So they're tasked with monitoring the visible emissions, the opacity of dust in the air. But when they did their inspection, that they marked "compliance," the facility's rock crusher and screening equipment were not in operation. The access roads had been wetted down before the inspection of the facility's water truck to control any fugitive dust. So for me, if you are going to be monitoring opacity made by rock crushing and screening activity, and then it should probably be in functioning when you're measuring that. And also to note that the roadway that we are now redoing was washed down, which is a good thing, if you don't want the dust to go in the air. But it begs the question, was it done for this inspection? Or was it, is that a regular part of their activity? And then if you go to page, oh wait, there was one other item on there I wanted to bring to your attention. Oh, and then on this item here, so this speaks to the city's activities here, this one. It says, "cement truck traveling south on industrial court towards the entrance of the facility. The roadway was dry and dusty at the time of the inspection." But they did say earlier that they wetted down the road. So I'm not really sure what that, how that, you know, applies both ways in this situation. And then if you go to page 65 and 72, we have another inspection that was done a year later, because this is a yearly inspection. And so you have 12822 of this year, and they were marked "in compliance." And then you have the description right here on page 72. And it says, "a visible emissions observation was conducted by air and water quality personnel on the Sandvik Rock Crusher while the facility's consultant, Beatty Environmental Services, was performing the facility's annual VE visual emissions test on the rock crusher. The facility screener was not in operation at the time of the test and will be tested at a later date. The VE test on the crusher was not conducted under normal conditions due to the operation of a small water cannon device supplementing water suppression on the crusher. Therefore, the test was not conducted when the highest representation of emissions could potentially occur. No fugitive emissions were noted at the facility at the time of inspection." And then if we go to page 6, we have the appraisal that was done. And in the appraisal, it has the facility valued appraised at $1,600, $1,000,000, $1,650,000. And so when I initially brought this, I put this on the agenda, it was about a month or maybe more ago, I didn't know about the next piece of the puzzle. But part of the appraisal, let me just back up one second, part of the appraisal here, it says, "the tests of the highest and best use, the property vacant, the subject," wait a minute, where is it? No, it's over here, sorry, down here. "There are no unusual environmental limitations on development. Unless noted elsewhere, there are no known environmental contaminations of the subject." So then-
How much more time would you like?
Just a couple of minutes? I'm just trying to walk through this and make sense out of it. Then if you forward to page 57, I apologize. And we have an environmental study that was done, and on this, they did find yielded detections of arsenic greater than the state of Florida's CTLs in the groundwater and in the soil. And then that leads me to my very last item that I wanted to bring to your attention, which is on page 235 of 242. And it was an article in the paper, and it says that, "air pollution due to fine particle matter can lead to cardiovascular and respiratory disease and cancer, according to the World Health Organization. The zip codes that make up Newtown and Central Coconut District have the highest rate of emergency room admissions and hospitalizations for asthma of any zip code in Florida." I think that is quite telling, and Central Coconut is one of those zip codes. We, as a city, are doing everything in our authority that we can do. I have reached out to the county, I've reached out to DEP. We've had an appraisal done. The obvious thing to do was to buy the property, which was a suggestion from Commissioner Kotsinger. But I'm not so sure that's what the obvious solution is at this point. I would like you to hear from some of the residents and hear their stories of what they've been living with. I think we need to collaboratively come up with a solution, in some way, shape, or form, to address these neighbors' needs, in a lawful way that does not violate the current property owner's rights as well. I'm not saying this is not going to be a challenge, but I think that this issue needs to rise to the occasion of where we, as a body, can act to help the citizens with this issue. So with that, I will-
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Any questions?
And we have heard from many of them in the past, as they've appeared before this board. What we'll do is, we'll do a round of questions and comments, and then we'll take citizens' input, which is significant, and then we'll go back around, if that works for everybody, so-
Maybe would you like me to stay here?
I think that's who, Commissioner, that's who the commissioners will be asking questions to, you and whoever else. Commissioner Albert?
If we're doing everything that legally we can do, what else can we do as a commission besides buy the property and, you know, and shut down the business? I don't, you know, and I know it's a horrible situation, I wouldn't want to be living with that, but I don't know what we can do as a commission if we're doing everything we can.
That's an excellent question. I'm not sure what we can do, other than, you know, as a body, this is when we can talk about it, this is when we can try to find a solution. Do we put pressure on the county to do an inspection when the equipment is running, for example? Do we have our own air and water quality regulatory body, or agency, or consultant come out and do this? Do we move forward with a potential conversation with the property owner to purchase the property, at which point we can do our own assessment to see actually how damaged the water and the soil is, from our own point of view? Mr. Fournier points out, in order to purchase a property, you have to have a willing seller. We don't know that, maybe we could engage in that conversation, maybe it would go somewhere, maybe it won't, I don't know. But it's a conversation I want this body to have. I know you all are very smart, creative people, and Commissioner Bati, Vice Mayor Bati has also, I believe, had some interactions with the neighborhood, this is in his district. I would like the five of us to come, to put our heads together and have a conversation about creative solutions that we think will create some kind of relief or solution for this, in this situation. So I'm open to your suggestions and ideas. And I believe some of the citizens may also have some suggestions as well.
Commissioner, do you have more questions, Commissioner Albert?
No.
Commissioner Brody?
Do you, I know that, Pat, you've been working on this a lot, and I've stayed in contact with you on this, is there anything you wanted to add? And do you agree with the assessment that we're doing everything we can?
I can tell you, on our side, our staff, Lucia, Diane, and Nick and his crew, we have looked at this, along with Mr. Fournier's office, every which way that we can take regulatory action. I would just correct the Commissioner, you left off one body, it's Department of Health, who we did forward the neighborhood's concern to Chuck Henry's office, I believe, in September of last year, for them to look into the sanitary nuisance issues. So there are actually four regulatory bodies that are working on this. But there is a confluence of authority here, and I think that's what the Commissioner is talking about, some level of frustration, because we're basically at the lowest level of this governmental hierarchy. So we don't have regulatory authority over the county. I'd be happy to have a conversation with Mr. Lewis and Mr. Johnson, but that's all that it's going to be. We cannot force either the state or the county to take any action.
What's your understanding of the county's authority over this issue?
They are, their authority is governed or handed down by the state agency to oversee the air quality. So I know that they have personnel on staff that specialize in this, and have specialized training in this, and you just saw some of their reports from the Commissioner.
But what is their, what is their authority? If they find it to be a problem, can they shut it down? Can they-
That I can't speak to, sir, I would assume so. You know, what their, their level of authority is, I would imagine that if they found something harmful, that they would shut it down. But again, I can't speak on their behalf, it'd be, you know-
Would it be prudent for us to do a, some kind of an independent analysis as to the, you know, whatever their inspection is? Would it be prudent for us to hire a consultant to do our own?
Well, I think that's, whatever the will of the commission actually would be in under those circumstances. However, I don't know if that would force, put the county in a position to take any action whatsoever. I'm guessing that they would rely on their own experts to make any determination for enforcement action. So I think we can have that conversation, maybe the city attorney's office, I'm not sure. But a third-party evaluation, similar to the assessment that was done for the appraisal, I'm not sure that they would act on any third-party. It'd be like the PI bringing information forward to a police department.
I think it's valid, as long as it's from a valid company, and you couldn't refute it. I mean, they can always ignore it, but if it's, you know, if they have, I would, as sitting here, I would consider that, if that were brought to my attention. I don't know what that would incur. Buying it outright, I don't know if that's a possibility. A, the seller has to be willing to sell it, and B, when they know that the government is looking to buy it, usually their prices become ridiculous.
Commissioner, can I just say two things about that? You know, one is, even if we were to do an assessment, as you saw in Commissioner Aaron Koch's assessment-
Yeah.
-they were in compliance. So, again, they can comply, they could put everything back in compliance, but then what?
Well, I feel like at the minimum, you know, if they're not watering the, you know, the crushed debris regularly, or they need to do it more, maybe there's some flexibility there until a longer-term solution is enacted. But the idea, or what comes to my mind is, have we engaged with the owners of the property at all?
We've engaged with their legal representation, yes, sir. And early in the process, we were in conversation with the owner of the process, until this became a tad more complicated, as far as the zoning issues, and some of the compliance issues were concerned. And they retained multiple different law firms.
Sure. And it's not just the, you know, I'm just thinking, outside of the regulatory side of it, if there's no avenue for the county or the state to do anything, then it has to be a kind of a mutually agreed-upon path forward. Taking that, kind of going in that vein, you know, the property is worth a good amount of money, 1.3, but that's just the property. That takes, doesn't take into account the money that they're making, that, you know, makes the business worth something, and that is probably a lot more than this.
It's also contaminated.
Oh, that's right.
So remember that.
Which makes it difficult to do other things with.
Marion Anderson.
But we don't know that. We don't know that, we haven't done an assessment ourselves as a city. So maybe yes?
So hold on a second.
Maybe not.
What I'm thinking is, the greatest power that we have as a local body is through our zoning. I mean, we can make a piece of dirt worth nothing, worth a lot, depending on what you can do with it. I feel like, you know, maybe a possibility is for us to empower city staff to negotiate with the, approach the owners of the property and negotiate with them to, you know, do something with the zoning to make it lucrative enough for them to want to sell it, and maybe they would become a willing. And then what we would have to do is enact that zoning, and then they could put it on the market to create that. I mean, I truly think the long-term solution has to come through change in use and zoning and a transfer of the property. But it has to be, it's going to have to be willing. Don't you agree, Mr. Fournier?
Yes, I mean, I think that's one angle that hasn't probably been as fully discussed as some of the others, is some, what you just said, zoning changes that would provide an incentive for alternate development, that's where you're going.
And you could, I mean, we don't like to do it, but you can zone it, you know, as part of the, as part of the, you know, agreement to sell it, we would create, we would rezone it to make it more valuable for them. I mean, similar, like, we did something like over on Fruitville, I mean, we did Ben Groff's property, remember, we, or the previous commission, created a kind of a special zone for him to do some affordable housing and stuff.
You're doing it on Marion Anderson as well.
And we're kind of doing, yeah. So, I mean, I just think that that's the, that's the path, but they may be, you know, the problem is, is they may be making so much money there that it would be, you know, that that seesaw doesn't scale the other way.
Vice Mayor Bati?
First of all, Commissioner Koch, I want to thank you for being a champion on this, in this effort. Like I said, you've been extraordinary in being an advocate for the residents, you know, over there dealing with this. I mean, we can't do anything in terms of, like, eminent domain or anything, or whatever.
It has to be for public purpose.
It can't be for a public purpose?
What's a public purpose?
I don't know, I mean, exactly. I mean, a park, or affordable housing, I mean, something. I mean, and I think this is, you know, I'm kind of dealing with a situation like that over on 12th Street, you know? But it's not, you know, for health reasons, it's just, you know, a matter of a property owner that's having industrial use. The amount of money that they make, you know, these people, it's tough to try and get them to sell. I'm just looking at these photos, and I mean, it's kind of sick to even look at, to see a pile of, you know, rubble right behind somebody's yard. How do you even live like that? You know, and, yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, we got just, I mean, no pun intended, but concrete evidence, like, right there. I mean, I mean, of an actual hazard, like, staring us, like, right in the face. Or these, you know, people coming out of their backyard and looking at that, or their children, like, breathing in that, you know, that dust. And what about this wall that you're talking about?
So, the wall won't probably help with the dust, but there are other issues aside from the dust. There's noise, there's vibration, and these impacted the neighbors' quality of life as well. So the wall, we're allowed to have six and a half feet? Eight feet? And they've requested a variance to go up to 14?
Yes.
We haven't submitted a request, okay. So they can have an eight-foot wall, and it's a thick concrete wall, which will help a little bit with noise and the vibration, because when the crusher crushes these big rocks of concrete, it creates this vibration, it, you know, they, the residents can't be on their porches, they can't have a, you know, a garden party, or even have friends over, when they are doing this business, because it's loud, it vibrates their houses, they have historic homes over there, and it just, it vibrates the whole house. And it's, it really impacts their quality of life, so hopefully the wall could help with at least the noise a little bit. But it, it's my opinion that it's not going to help with the dust. But it's, it's under our purview, and, you know, our city staff is working on that. One other thing I forgot to say was that also in the redesign of the street, as you all remember, we are going to be building in treatment, stormwater treatment of that water, which was, is now, still goes directly to Hog Creek and into the bay. But we are doing something to treat that water, which is another step in the right direction of what we should be doing.
So then, I mean, I mean, this is evident that it's a, it's a health hazard. I mean, if you bid some kind of, like, Phase 1 report on that thing, I mean, I'm sure the water table is probably not, not, not good, and I don't understand how that's able to happen. Just kind of had this situation, talking about the hotel, that basically abuts and encroaches right into a residential neighborhood, you know? This, this, I mean, that's one thing, in terms of just blocking the view. This is a whole nother issue when you're talking about the health of an entire, like, neighborhood. There's nothing that can be done regarding that? I mean, with this, I mean, being this close, you know, to the neighborhood, the environmental hazard that it, that it causes?
Vice Mayor, I had hoped we would at least enter into negotiations to purchase the property, but there are barriers to that. I mean, we have to have a willing seller, and the property, it looks like, you know, there are levels of arsenic there, and I don't know the cost-
Yeah, yeah.
-to, you know, get rid of that. But I think it's something we should discuss as an option.
And then, and then even if you did, you know, speak about selling it, or whatever, they got to have a place to go. You know, so that's a whole nother, you know, whether or not they even want to entertain that. But, man, I'm open to any ideas or anything anybody has to say, or whatever.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Commissioner Aaron Koch. You know, when these zoning codes were originally developed, it was to prevent, which is the irony, it was to prevent factories from being in neighborhoods next to residential properties. You know, so we didn't want a private nuisance or a- so we didn't want a private nuisance or a public nuisance next to a residential property. And most often now, when this come, when things come before us, we're using the zoning code not to protect neighborhoods, not from factories or public nuisances, but neighborhoods from other neighborhoods. We're using the zoning code for the unintended purpose of protecting against other housing. This was exactly what it was, it was meant for. I agree with much of what has been said today. I think we should re-inspect. I mean, there's an option to re-inspect it. Why, is there a reason that we, we cannot just mandate that?
Well, I don't think we have any inspection authority. I, I don't, you know, what I heard, it'd be interesting, I don't know if there's any written inspection protocol either, because it seems to me if the inspector is there to inspect a particular piece of equipment or...
On behalf of who?
Machinery. Well, I think that the state makes the county their agent for purpose of...
Let me just finish. Don't, don't explain in depth, because I know you like to, you're very knowledgeable about these things. And so, I, I do agree with the Vice Mayor on eminent domain. They'll get fair market value and maybe slightly more, and we can use it for a park. We could use it for any public purpose. And I think that's actually a very, very...
I think you have a necessity issue there too, as well as the public purpose. So, don't, don't, you know, put all your eggs in that basket too soon.
To eliminate blight is also one of the, one of the state criteria.
How about a little bit like death?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good idea.
But, you know, you know, this, there can't be, I understand that we've done more than the county and more than any other agency around, but I, I also feel that there's, there could be something we could do. Have we engaged with their, their council and talked about an enclosure? So, everything they did was within an enclosure, so it doesn't go all over the...
I think that was the wall, the discussion.
A wall is not an enclosure.
No, not about them, them breathing it.
Yeah. I mean, I'm talking, I'm talking to a fully enclosed factory that they were for, you know, I think, I think it is well within our power to do that. Also, you know, city attorney, county attorneys, state attorneys, the Attorney General, we have the ability to enforce public and private nuisances. So, it is well within our authority to start an injunction proceeding in the courts, even if it's a temporary injunction until we figure this out. So, I think it's within, so, please, no clapping. We want people to feel comfortable when they, when they come up here. So, there must be something we can do, and I'd like to, you know, discuss that with you.
Okay.
Right now.
That's what we're here for. I'm not going to have a solution like on the spot, though. We need some information. Like, what I started to ask before was sort of a question. If an inspector goes out to inspect a machine and it's not on, I don't understand why they can't say, "Turn it on." You know?
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering. It seems reasonable if that's the purpose of the inspection. So, there's some questions like that that come up that probably should be further investigated.
Well, let's, let's, let's go to public comment, and then we can all do another round. I'm going to call individuals up five at a time. And I'm terrible at reading handwriting, so bear with me. Andre Mastrozianavi, Arthur Lindemans, Esther Lennox, Autumn Beckett, Stephanie Peter. Is that five? All right. All right. Andre?
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours.
Eric, thank you for taking the time, counsel. I own a home 1443 15th Street. I probably am approximately 100, 150, 200 feet from their abutting property line. In the morning, you can feel and hear the jackhammering. My house was built in 1926 in the neighborhood. It's a concrete home. Everything echoes. But I can see when he drives his little track hoe up there, and I hear, "Eh!" I mean, because everything just echoes. So, we feel the jackhammering. We see the machines. I went and talked to the man. I'm not about putting people out of business, but the problem is, is we don't bug him, but we hear them. And I want to tell you all, I actually am an expert in demolition. Lots of concrete that ends up in that place probably was painted with lead-based paint, and might have even been built with asbestos at the time, because at one point, it was a structural, functional piece of thing. And so, they're not testing anything that comes through this. It then gets broken, and then it gets put out there. But there is a real chance that this, see, this is the stuff that people don't want to see. That's why it ends up there. Y'all don't want to know what's going in the back of trucks. Then, and this is something for Autumn, she lives a little further down the road, the trucks come in and you hear them. But they're big trucks. We have a little neighborhood, a historic neighborhood, with wonderful people who for too long have actually been overlooked, and even some of the own community hasn't taken care of them well. And we're, and I feel like that. I love my house and the community. But what I was saying about that truck is, when those trucks are empty, they're big barrels. So, when they hit something, it goes bam! And it just echoes and goes through our windows, like I have original windows. But it's, if there was an idea that I had, just to let you all know, I don't know why we don't have rules about abutting residential to industrial property. Why is there no rule besides, you know, maybe a 100-foot barrier? We hear them, we smell them, we feel them. I don't do that to them. Why should they have a right to disparately impact the quality of my life with their commercial business and commerce? I don't think they should. All right?
Thank you.
Well, my, my name is Esther Lennox. I live in the neighborhood since 20 years. This problem came to me a year ago, and it is really concern, I'm really concerned about my health. I'm concerned about my health and my children's health. What do we breathe in here? Arsenic? This sounds really scary. And we need to stop these people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I live in the neighborhood. I...
What's your name for the record?
Autumn Beckett. First of all, thank you for addressing this today and all your arduous efforts to help to solve this horrible incompatibility issue. I know it's taken hundreds of hours of your time, and I really, really appreciate it. The heaviest outdoor industrial use is not even remotely compatible, a mere 100 feet or less from residential and commercial neighbors. Please imagine living with this in your own backyard. We bought our 1926 Spanish Mission home in Central Coconut, a historic neighborhood a few blocks from Sarasota Bay in 2014. What you're about to see on this video is not occurring when we bought the home. This changed five years ago. Neighbors have been suffering with this complete nightmare ever since. We feel it's a humane and absolutely miserable living with concrete fugitive dust, maddening industrial noises, sights, smells, tastes of an eternal construction site. Neighbors are worried about potential health hazards, and we've been subjected to heavy industrial equipment rattling our homes' windows, being jolted awake on weekdays and weekends as early as 6:00 a.m. by rattling heavily, heavy industrial equipment, and even on Sunday, Christmas Eve, in the evening of 2017. Neighbors have suggested the city implore the owner of the industrial concrete pit to change the business model to boat or car storage, or almost anything that is clean and quiet and does not disturb surrounding neighbors' rights to peacefully enjoy our own property. The DEP states there's no limit on the amount of concrete processing that can be processed, and private business wants to grow and make maximum profits. So, this business has already been intolerable, and once the new road goes in, it seems very likely the business will ramp up even more for profits. We've been suffering, oh, daily and treacherous living conditions that we can't control, and we need to help you restore our residential neighborhood. This video was taken from homes, from our residential homes on front porches, that's in front of the park. And this is our view, and this is what we breathe. Can you imagine living in that? And I love all our neighbors. I've met so many wonderful neighbors over the situation of all things. But this is a backyard. This is someone's backyard you're looking into that.
Is that a button?
These clouds just come on the days of their processing. Anyone who drives down there sees it, and they're like, "What, what is this?" It just lingers. It coats your face. Sometimes I go get the mail, and I just get blasted with it, and I have to come in and wash my face. It's not humane.
How long do you have? Can we stop the video?
It's like 20 seconds. That's for a backyard.
Has, has an additional 40 seconds to stop the video? Just one advantage. I don't want to compete. Press the spacebar.
Oh, okay. There.
Okay. My name is Arthur Lindemans. I live on 12th Street in Florida, so I'm a couple of blocks away from this. I certainly never expected, when I moved to Sarasota 10 years ago, that I would have to deal with this toxic health, life-threatening situation. I am the president of Central Coconut Neighborhood Association. Several residents started making noise about this, complaining about five years ago. Thankfully, due to Jen's efforts, and so were the local businesspeople, Autumn and such, we finally got Herald Tribune to start running some news articles about this. It's been on the news. Jen has really jumped into this problem. In the last year, we've had more progress than we've had in five years. At the same time, what I see is one agency saying it's outside our boundaries. It's their problem. It's their problem. I've had discussions with the county. I've had discussions with the Southern District of the Environmental Protection Agency. I've had discussions with the Florida Department of Health that's centered down in the county. I've had discussions with them up in Tallahassee. Jen has had far more conversations with the county commissioners than I have had, but we have been pushing. Now, let me back up a little bit, and you've heard some very dramatic testimony. And I've had to be, I've had to deal with emails, discussions for the last few years about this. What needs to be said is that not only has the county been negligent in doing proper inspections, the owner did not get the right permits. And I'm going to be running out of time very quickly, so let me, let me kind of jump forward. The county will only look at opacity, how dense is a cloud. They are not measuring PM.2.5 particles. They can be smaller than COVID viruses. That is what causes the cardiovascular problems. That is what causes the pulmonary problems. They are not measuring that. We are going to be, with donations, because the city refused to fund us, we are going to be acquiring through donations a number of PM.2.5 particle monitoring systems, together with a weather station, together with video equipment. We will be acquiring that this coming month. We will be having data that comes in in September, October. We will bring that data back to the commission, because we appreciate what you've done in terms of both the road and going forward. Okay.
Peters.
So, mine's pretty much more of the same, but I'll go ahead and read it anyway. First of all, thank you all for listening and taking the time to come up with a solution. So, I'm hoping that this is definitely the beginning of a solution. The community now knows and understands the science of what's happening. We do have studies on the poison and the carcinogens. The community knows that there are carcinogens and health hazards surrounding this facility. The community knows that you are a governing body, and it is your opportunity to maintain the safety of all of us and our constituents. The community wants to have safe, healthy, and livable conditions for everyone in Sarasota County and city. The community knows that you truly want to do the right thing. I really hope that's true. I do believe that's true. We all know that Sarasota does not want to be known for anything other than beautiful beaches and clear consciousness. I am giving the owner the benefit of the doubt, and I think of him as a decent human being. I am sure he is willing to purchase a more appropriate, reasonable location with all the safety features needed to have permits for a hazard material site, not a storage facility, which is now what he lists it as. I do believe ultimately, it will be better for the owner or owners to combine both his locations, which is also by a Booker High School. And if this is the way it is being ran on our street, I can only imagine what that is like over there. This could be a three-way win for everyone. In my honesty, I think it would help with our leading citizens, which are you, the commissioners, alongside with the business owner, and we can securely locate a safe environment for everybody. My question is, a timeframe and the limitations on the facility as soon as possible. And I do understand what the mayor has mentioned, but I believe that gives us up to 28 days at max. So, I believe that there needs to be something a little bit more concrete to basically monitor their hazards and the health risks of all the citizens and constituents. And honestly, it's right next to a park. And that really saddens me, that there is no regard for these children going to the park and having this smog of hazardous waste going into their breathing systems, when we're super concerned about COVID. But yet, it's okay for them to have arsenic and asbestos and selenium. So, that's, that's all.
Thank you. I'm going to call the next five up.
I wouldn't mind giving my extra, oh, I was going to say to the video, but...
All right. Let's call the next five up. Victoria Van Bleet, Laurel Forberg, Sarah Munford, John Revan, Becca Hadwell.
Yeah.
The floor is yours.
Pardon me?
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I'm here because basically of my neighbor's distress. My understanding is that there's real health consequences and also issues of the disturbance of the peace. I'm actually, you know, wondering, what are we here for? To reward the businesses with extra profit at the expense of the health of our community? In fact, I think it's actually pretty amazing that we're here, and it is a compliment to the people around me who've had class-action attorneys after this now, that they have not gone to a litigious place and instead continue, after all this time, to have the patience to have a rational communication regarding their health that they're giving up on a daily basis. I went to that park. I was just curious how bad it was. There is no way. I could take my hand and just write, you could write a little note to yourself in the dust. And I touched that dust because my...
Stop the whispering, please, Sergeant.
My degree is in...
I just, we're hearing it up here. It's very, making it very difficult to listen to her. Let's give her an extra 30 seconds.
Thank you. My degree is in biology with a major in chemistry, and so I do understand a lot of these scientific articles. And it blows my mind that this has not cooked up into a big explosion by now. Honestly, these people have way more patience than I ever would. I mean, that was my first counsel. Hey, man, yeah, get the attorneys. I mean, this is crazy, that you guys, it's kind of like another piney point. You go ahead and let this big company make what's chump change to them, trading in the lives of the people that live around them and the children that use that park. And I think when this story comes out further, it will be very damaging. I also think that this is... I also think that this is possibly going to be a very closely looked upon vote. I think it has a huge statement for each commissioner here. Do you care about business? Or do you care about the health of the kids at Booker and the park children and the people that have been patiently and just like Mother Teresa slogging through this deal? Anyway, I guess that's all I'm going to say. And I, I hope you do your best and vote by your conscience.
Thank you. Ms. Laurel Korburg?
Hi, I'm Laurel Korburg, and I live relatively close. I live on Walker Circle. So as we've been going to, we're new to the area. We've moved here about a year and a half ago. So we've been going to the city meetings and the neighborhood meetings. And that's where we first heard about this problem. I really wasn't aware of it because it's, I don't know, it's a few blocks over. So we've been starting to drive over there to see. And I'm like, oh my God, here we go again. We moved here from Virginia, and we lived on the water. And about two miles down was a coal processing plant. And every morning, I could write my name in coal dust. It's shocking. What's even more shocking to me about this situation is these tests that have been done when the plant's not operating. Excuse me. I owned a flower shop in Virginia, and the fire people would come whenever they felt like it. And you better be ready, or they would write you up. What in the world? To allow somebody to test something when the equipment's not running? We just saw on that video, and thank you so much for producing that for us. We've driven over there at night and not seen it. We saw it because we could also write our name. This is ridiculous. And the buck needs to stop with whoever can shut this company down or negotiate with them to move it to an appropriate place. But to allow people's health to be continued, you know what's going to happen? What's going to happen is all of these, when people live in an area where it's a historic district, guess what? They're some of your best neighbors. Because guess what? They're there because they love their property and they love their neighborhood, and they take care of it. But if we don't do something about this, they're going to move away. Because no one forever is going to live in a situation where they know their health is in jeopardy. I sure won't. And I'm, I'm a good little ways away. But still, that's just ridiculous. So I, and I also want to thank each of you, because I think you, I can see that you're hearing this and trying to figure out what we can do. And I just hope that you will all stay completely focused on this. It should be way at the top of the chart. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Munford, Sarah. Okay, you want to wave it? John Revan?
Hi.
All right.
I'd like to thank the commission for hearing our grievances about this matter. I've owned property at 1406 15th Street, which is on the corner of 15th and Central Avenue. So I am directly across the street from this, what used to be a dirt alley. I feel a little left out of the bounty of increases of property ownership. Since I bought that property 14 years ago, have spent $160,000 in payments, interest, maintenance. That property is now worth 70% of what it was worth 14 years ago. It is a direct, not approximate, a direct cause of that facility. The fact that no one will even look at that property at any price. It's 15,000 square feet on the corner. No one even wants to look at it. Once they see that facility, once they hang around long enough to go through the dust storm, nobody in their right mind is going to buy that property. So I've been excluded from this bounty of property appreciation totally, and so is everyone else in the neighborhood. You hear about properties going for $10, $12 million? You don't hear about properties being down 40% to 50% in a 14-year period, especially in Sarasota. And the evidence is, as everyone else has said, pretty concrete here. This is what it is. And I often wondered, well, I didn't get the hint, when I bought the property and they had the park across the street, and there were four kids over there, and they were wearing masks. And I asked Ms. Belcher, I think her name was, who lived across the street. She said, I won't let my kids go over there without a face mask on. It looked like COVID 12 years before the fact. Why should you have to have your kids wear a mask so you can go to a public park? It doesn't seem right. So I'm glad you guys are listening to this. It sounds like you're getting the point. I would also like to suggest that once that plant is gone, the county will probably realize significant increase in property tax revenue through the appreciation due to the absence of that facility. So any money that they spend acquiring it, most likely over time and amortization, would be more than made up for. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Becca Hadwin?
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Becca. I'm with the Multicultural Health Institute today, which has been working the level of healthcare access and outcomes since 1995 in our community. And so Commissioner Ahern Koch raised a study that found arsenic in the soil and groundwater, I believe in 2022. I want to add that another study in 2020 also found concerning levels of arsenic in the concrete on that road. We are also currently conducting a survey of Newtown residents to get some input in their concerns about their environment and what they would like to see in it. We're in the preliminary results. We have 40 responses so far, but of that, over 60% are concerned about the level of air pollution in their community. And I also think it's important to note that this is also an issue of racial justice and racial disparities in terms of environmental justice and the effects that this is having on a historically black community. As Commissioner Ahern Koch also raised, Newtown residents have accounted for a disproportionate amount of ER visits due to asthma. So the health effects are clear, even though we don't have full research on them. I would encourage you all to visit the-mhi.org for more data. We've been doing research projects on these issues for a while. And there's a really impactful 2019 study that looked at the asthma rates. I would also like to ask for further meetings, further conversations with community stakeholders. This is in the middle of the day. People are working. I'm only here because it's part of my job. Continuing to assess the lead levels in high-risk youth, how are people being impacted by this, as well as the levels of arsenic and other contaminants in the soil, water, air in this area is also essential. And so I appreciate you all bringing this up today. And I would just like to share a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King in closing, one of his many great speeches. He said, "Somewhere we must come to see that social progress never rolls in on the wheels of inevitability. It comes through the tireless efforts and the persistent work of dedicated individuals. And without this hard work, time itself becomes an ally of the primitive forces of social stagnation." And so we must help time, and we must realize that time is always right to do right. There is no reason for these people, for any of us, to be living in conditions like this, generations of people getting poisoned. So I urge you to act with urgency and join the persistent and dedicated individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. The next five individuals are going to be Candace Coonrod, Lori Sikora, Ivana Radichak, All right. Ms. Candace, floor is yours.
Good afternoon. I would like to mention, oh, my name is Candace Coonrod. I've been a resident of Central Coconut for 10-plus years. That last cloud you saw was right in front of my house. I live across the street from the park where my children play. Imagine your boys shooting basketball with all those clouds of dust rolling around. My family lives at the corner of 15th and Central, a mother of three that we raised here, and I'm also a registered nurse at Sarasota Memorial. I bring this up because I feel I'm in a unique position to really understand the impact that U.S. recycling is having on our neighborhood and its residents. The crushing of concrete is known to release fine particles in the air. These fine particles cause many medical issues, such as asthma, eye, throat, and respiratory irritation, and can cause serious lung issues, such as silicosis, COPD, pulmonary fibrosis. All of these things are terrible. I mean, these patients, they slowly suffocate to death while their family and caregivers watch. This is not something that residents should be thinking about when they're watching their families outside, their husbands mowing the lawn. When I'm walking my dog, my very healthy 17-year-old daughter had to have her tonsils removed this year after constant tonsillitis that started pretty soon after U.S. recycling began crushing concrete. I'm very worried of the long-term effects that breathing in this concrete dust will have on my family and my neighbors. My home is at the corner where large trucks are constantly rolling past to deliver debris to U.S. recycling and kicking up that dust as we, as we try to be outside and enjoy our, our home. I feel like I live in an industrial park instead of a beautiful community two blocks from the bay and mere blocks from downtown Sarasota. There must be a resolution to ensure the health and safety of the community and my children. U.S. recycling simply does not belong next to homes. We have been residents here for over 10 years and have seen this neighborhood grow into a community that really cares about each other, and we've been working towards a better quality of life. Please help us find a resolution to this urgent matter, because it is an urgent matter. This is serious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Another resident who was unable to attend has sent a video. We call her Grandma Jessie. I'd like to play the video that she sent.
I double-clicked, I double-tapped.
Yeah, I saw you doing that. Somehow it's minimized. Give me a second, then hit the spacebar. Two-minute video. Could you pick up another speaker's card and then we, on her behalf?
You have, you have my time.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll do that. All right, Lori Sikora?
Next to it?
Yes, and you go out there and the downtown, we're working.
Let's stop that for now. I'll give you another opportunity to do it, okay? Lori Sikora?
Hi, everybody. I know there's a lot of smart people at this table, and thank you so much for hearing this issue. I live three blocks away from this mess, and it's ridiculous. It's just crazy. Nobody should have to live like this. I think about the people that live over there all the time, dealing with this kind of thing. And I just want to play the sound effects of the stuff that we hear every single day, living our lives in this neighborhood. It's not just about the fumes from all the trucks. It's not just about the toxic dust from all the trucks. It's this noise. This is debilitating. I'm thinking that the noise pollution science has been strong since 2005. Everybody can Google it. And it's not just about the decibel level. We all hear this every day, almost all day if they're in operation, not to mention the blasting trucks, which very much concern me because of the children playing in the nearby park. And it's not just the kids playing in the park either, you know? They're coming to and from the park. They're pushing each other like kids do. They have basketballs, and the trucks are zooming through a 20 mile per hour zone, going at what I consider a hazardous speed, which I believe is 15 or 20 miles per hour over the speed limit regularly. I don't know how you could stop it. I don't know what you could do about it. It's a traffic issue. But this is crazy, not to mention the pollution. And I am so happy we're addressing it. I don't know why it's taken so long either. And thank you, Mayor Aurora, for mentioning and actually considering the eminent domain. I've sent out plenty of emails. I researched it for six months out of my life about what you could actually do as a city, okay? And I think there, there's something you could be doing. I know you're all sitting in here wondering what it is, but I've heard a few really solid things mentioned today. And let me tell you, we are suffering. I'm three blocks away from this, and my life quality is suffering from this, not to mention the people who live right next to it with kids. Yeah, I heard this two weeks ago on a Sunday when I was in my front yard trying to do landscaping. Yeah, for most of the Sunday. And this is not just working hours, 9 to 5. Everybody's commenting on it. Sometimes it's holidays, sometimes it's late at night. People have called the cops. I've called the cops. A few weeks ago, upon Mr. Pat Robinson's suggestion, called the cops. What I did one day when the trucks were blasting through that 20 mile per hour zone, I can hear them clearly, sitting in my living room, watching TV. And I know approximately how fast they're going. It's nothing technical, because I don't have a radar gun, but I'm pretty familiar with the speed limit or how fast they're going, because I've driven trucks. I grew up in the excavating business, and I worked for the State Parks of Pennsylvania. I have my own dump truck. So when they're blasting through the gears on the standard transmissions, I know about how fast they're going. They're going at least 35, if not 40. Please, please, really put your legal minds in particular to work on this. Thank you so much. I hope you enjoyed the sound effects.
Ivana Radichak?
Ilona Arataichak.
Ilona.
Yes, thank you.
The V looks like an, the L looks like a V.
I'm sorry. Well, thank you so much again for your time and putting this on the table, Commissioner Jen, who never give up on us. So my name is Ilona Arataichak. I am, I am a resident of Sarasota City, and I moved from New York City in 2010 in this Central Coconut neighborhood with great health. In 2020, a decade after, I was diagnosed for body toxicity that was caused by high level of heavy metals, particularly aluminum. I didn't have a cans for breakfast, just want to make sure. I have started immediately the chelation therapy, and I'm still continuing Dr. Skerr in this matter, being the taxification protocol and monitoring daily the amount of heavy metals in my body on the, with the AO scan. It's a small medical technology, and also an additional medical therapies. Heavy metals like mercury are sending, as you all heard about, aluminum are toxic and very, very dangerous for human bodies. Research shows that those heavy metals from environment can lead to body toxicity, poisoning, impacting the whole body system, especially central nervous system, brain, and often causing diseases like, causing diseases like Alzheimer, autism spectrum disorder, cancer, and eventually death. It usually takes time, 10, 20 years. Mine was 10 years. Young children and pregnant women are affected more than others. There's a beautiful playground, as you heard, just one block away, and you were described it, how it looks. So I feel personally like we cannot be silent anymore about this, okay? About this playground covers with this poisoned dust, full of dangers, heavy metals. And we cannot be silent about the contaminants in the leaching water into the groundwater and stormwater runoffs to our beautiful bay and affecting all ecosystem. And 34236, it's not just our zip code, the dead zone. It's actually, what's this zip code? 34236?
Downtown.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's not our program. So our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. I hope today it's not that day. And invisible, sometimes it's very dangerous. It takes five, 10 years. In my case, it was 10 years. The kids absorbing more, pregnant woman absorbing more. The wind goes a little bit more towards one. First Street sometimes goes more towards the bay, okay? I took the action for myself, and I would do anything to be an advocate for the birds that falling down from the sky, the children, that in 10 years, they're going to be autistic. They're not going to be able to comprehend things, because we're all aware right now, and we're all taking responsibility. I hope we can recognize the issue and importance. Thank you.
Mr. Bloom?
Hi, thank you. Justin Bloom. I live in Indian Beach. I used to live in Central Coconut. The founder of Sun Coast Waterkeeper and an environmental attorney. I'm quite familiar with this site, and I wanted to direct my comments to you, not only about this site, but also other sites in the city of Sarasota that deal with air pollution issues. I can call myself a bit of an expert on water pollution law, not necessarily clean air, air law, but they're very similar. And I can address some of the questions that, and conversation that you had amongst yourselves about your enforcement authority and the opportunity to get delegated authority. You know, the, the. You know, this city, you're in a conundrum. I mean, you don't really have enforcement authority over this. You don't have the stick that I often wield, and that's kind of my philosophy, is not to really... I think part of it is to explore offering these folks a carrot so that ultimately you can realize a change of use of that facility. But I really think that you should focus on the stick that you don't even have, but I think that you can... I would recommend that you... You use the word resolution very often. That you consider a resolution asking the county to not only inspect this, properly inspect this facility, but to do an audit of their... Inspect their air program within the city of Sarasota. I'm sure that there are many communities outside the city and the county that would then redouble that effort and ask them to do an audit of their air program, period, which is flawed and failed. At one point, it might have worked when they received that delegation from the state. It flows from federal government to state, then they can delegate it to municipalities. You can explore seeking that authority yourselves to regulate and enforce. It's typically not done by municipalities, but you can do that. I think, you know, you should probably pursue all these things at once, but you might... I think the community would appreciate it. I think that your voice would be heard if you tried to work the angles with the county to get them to do what they're supposed to do, and they're failing, not only here, but also we've investigated cases and brought water enforcement actions against related types of facilities up on Myrtle Street. And I've seen around the county just complete failure of the county to operate an air program that was delegated to them by the state and then the state, I think, abdicated because it's just not working. So thank you for your attention to this matter, particularly your leadership, Councilwoman. And it's okay. I have to run. I'm supposed to be chairing another council meeting rather than let the panel finish. Thanks.
Thank you.
Raven Peters, feel free to come down and take that spot. Allison Werner?
Hi, I'm Allison Werner. I don't live in the Central Coconut neighborhood, but I wanted to come as kind of a representative of the greater area that we should all be very concerned about this. One of my best friends lives on Fifteenth Street, and when she told me what was happening there, my mind was just blown, like, could this really just be happening and there's no way to stop it? Everyone's spoken so beautifully today that I don't have a lot to add, but could I give my time to Grandma Jessie?
Yeah, we'll play Grandma Jessie. That's all right.
Perfect.
Just spacebar.
It's so bad you can't stay out there. We can't even have son to picnic back there no more.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. And how long have you lived in the... On the street?
Twenty-seven years.
Mm-hmm. And you know other neighbors who've lived here even longer?
Mr. Jones, they've been here forty years.
Mm-hmm.
Well, say it like this here. I'm the last come, because all the rest of them was here when I came.
Yes.
And I've been here for twenty-seven years.
Yeah. And it's just not having heavy industrial kicking up dust and noise all day is not...
The night, half of the night. They had stopped one time and start at six o'clock in the morning, but my grandson said after when I was gone, they start back any hour.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's just not...
It's just not fair to us.
Mm-hmm. And we were here first.
We was here first. And my understanding and reading, all the stuff back there supposed to be in a building.
Yep. Yep.
And all at once, here they come and got everything out in the open, making it hard for people like we got asthma and stuff, asthma, respiratory problems, and you can't really enjoy your outside now.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would play in the park. I'd just shoot some hoops. I'm not great at basketball, but I would go, and I would be short of breath when the trucks were going by.
Yes, I don't stay... You know, I used to just go in to have one I first...
Ms. Peters?
Hello, yes, my name is Raven Peters, and I am a resident of Sarasota City. I would like to first state that I was born and raised in Sarasota. I went to Booker High School. I left Sarasota and am returning as an attorney, which I'm very grateful for that opportunity. I believe another speaker spoke that historic residents, they're going to leave the community. You're going to have different neighbors move in. But I want to make you aware that a lot of people in this community can't leave, that our only option is to come to you. Our only option is to have this resolved here. People are coming to you from this community, taking off work, to have you listen to us. And as we sit here and we decide ideas and we put our heads together, this is still going on. Five minutes down the road, it's going on. People are breathing this into their systems right now. Additionally, I was asked to read a statement from Tom Rogers, who was not able to attend today. He stated, "My family operates Robertson's Billards and Spas at Central Avenue and Industrial Drive. That is the physical entrance to the U.S. recycling operation, Ground Zero, as we call it. We have closed every single opening and window in our building. There are seventeen windows. We have culled them all permanently to keep the fugitive dust from the interior air that we breathe inside. Unfair. We love Sarasota and Florida in the winter. We love to open our windows every single winter, but we can't. We had visions of constructing an outdoor spa showroom to highlight the benefit of the gorgeous Sarasota winter weather. We want to display elaborate, modern spas that show well-in-garden style settings. We have scrapped all hope of that. Anything left outside is unusable, from dust within mere days. Our building is literally covered in a thick dust we had laboratorily tested. It was tested at a cost to us of some seventeen hundred dollars. It was found to contain unacceptable alpha silica levels, a well-known air quality health hazard." In closing, John Engelhardt of Florida Department of Environmental Protection visited our property personally and stated, "No one should have to live or work under these conditions." But there is still no action. The concerned citizens living at Ground Zero have been clear. We need your help. We await and pray that you, our city commission, will become the leaders and champions that we so desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you. The next five will be Terrell Salem, Dan Lobek, Debbie Trice, Lourdes Ramirez, and Fred Atkins.
This is a stack of stuff. Why y'all put all of it together? I signed in at nine-thirty this morning. Why you just calling my name?
I just... I don't want to be with y'all. I wanted to go a long time ago, so I could be home by now.
I've been here since nine-thirty. I saw what was going on a long time ago.
All right, Mr. Salem?
Thank you. Terrell Salem, chairman of the planning board. So basically today, what we're understanding is that we basically have nine-eleven workers all over again. We have the same situation as we had in New York with the individuals working at the site of the towers. These people are living in the community where they're breathing in dust on a daily basis. And I'm so happy to see that the chair and the vice chair and Mr. Brody and Ms. Koch, that y'all are looking at purchasing this property. But I want to make sure that we have a plan for the property when we purchase the property, because as you know, we've had a brownfield in y'all inventory for far too long that we still haven't done anything with that brownfield. So don't start collecting brownfields. Also, I think that you do have the ability to exercise intimate domain, because it is a public health issue. I think you have the data to support that. Also, I think that it would be wise, and I believe you all are probably already doing it, but you got to build some type of alliance with the county commission. That's where the issue is. We need to network with them. We have differences with them as commissioners, but you got to sit down with them and get them to understand the problems that are going on in the city, because they're absolutely annoying the city right now, ignoring the city right now. And I can tell you, the city of Sarasota doesn't process any type of the information when it relates to environmental issues. I'm a contractor. I do demolition. I applied for a permit, but the permit will not be approved by the city until the county health environmental techs give approval to it. So you have to work that angle, but ultimately, it's going to come down to you guys extending the olive branch across the aisle to the county, working with them, and getting this thing hammered out. And you guys have good reason to do it, and I have no doubt that you're going to get it done. And good job on your report. I hate to say that, because I'm running against you, but...
And then, are you a city resident?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Lobek?
I got forty-two seconds.
Oh.
He did. Go ahead.
That's all right. That's all right.
No, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I know you didn't. I don't take it personal, but go ahead.
Mr. Lobek?
If Mr. Salem's done, because he is so eloquent on this. And, you know, it's rare that an issue comes before a public body like this, which is so clear-cut, where the need for urgent action is so demonstrable, and this is one of the most compelling I've ever seen. This should be something treated as an intolerable condition and situation by each and every member of the city commission. And then the only question becomes what is done? And there are two paths. One is enforcement of pollution laws. County's not doing it. I mean, to give a warning and then go out there and test just how much dust is in the air when everything's shut down and not operating is not enforcement. And, you know, I was out there and meeting a few days ago in a business and went behind the business and saw... I didn't touch it, because I understand it could well be toxic, but the whole side of the building is full of dust piled up on the windowsills. You know, there's no question factually about what's going on here. So there's the enforcement route. County's not doing its job. Do you just pass a resolution urging them to do the job? Timid step. Have your city attorney, your very capable city attorney, inspect the potential, which I understand is there, to acquire delegation of enforcement authority from the state in lieu of the county. Some cost involved, but what price do you put on people's lives and health and clean air? The other, and I had it on my notes before I came in, but I'm so glad the mayor preempted me on this apparently, is eminent domain. No question, I looked at the case law. You have a right to... Huh? I think it's a good thing. I think... No question you have a right to exercise eminent domain for a positive public purpose, turning this into affordable housing in a public-private partnership, much less abating a public nuisance or a source of any concern with regard to environmental pollution. And it could be said, oh, there's a cost involved by that. But if a majority of this city commission thinks it's okay to spend hundreds of millions of dollars of our infrastructure funds to build a new performing arts center in lieu of Van Waisel, isn't it make sense to spend whatever is involved here, maybe one point five million dollars, to acquire this toxic property and end this problem once and for all? So I would urge this commission to, at the conclusion of discussion, to charge the city attorney with doing a memo to you on the use of eminent domain to purchase this property. And when they investigate the soil, it might bring the cost down, by the way, from the appraisal that you have. If that's the way you choose to go, or to look into delegation of state enforcement authority. Thank you.
Ms. Trice?
Hi, I'm Debbie Trice. Good afternoon, and I am a city resident and not too far from this site. Flint, Michigan. I'll say that again. Flint, Michigan. Just hearing that name turned your thoughts to a city whose children were poisoned as a result of irresponsible actions by state and local government. We're all here today to prevent the name Sarasota, Florida from triggering the same response. In Flint's case, the problem was municipal drinking water contaminated with lead. In Sarasota, it's the air we breathe contaminated with particles containing arsenic and possibly other toxic materials. But we don't know exactly what materials, because the machines that spew the toxic dust were idle when the testers sent by Sarasota County were on site. Apparently, there were no follow-up measurements when the site was fully operational. We've got to get the county to return and do adequate testing. Also, we don't know how far the toxic particles have spread, because no effort has been made to test the unusual amount of dust that accumulates in North Sarasota. You all sound very motivated today. I hope and I urge you, both the city and the county governments, to stop denying the problem and begin taking concrete steps to alleviate it. Let's not allow Sarasota to become another Flint. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Atkins?
Good day, Commissioner Mayor. Just for a historical perspective, when there were just concrete companies over there, it was poisonous. They ran out the first group of white folks that used to live in that area of Central. And then black folks moved into there. Matter of fact, Scotty lived over there, just a block from where these concrete companies was. And then, now, there's a whole nother gentrification going on right now. And so now, there's this middle-class white group that's moving into this community, and they are more aware, and they got money enough to raise funds, to get testers, and all that stuff. The county has known about this problem for over fifty years. I used to be a little boy playing in the concrete piles and dirt piles when I lived in Black Bottom on Sixth and Central. So this has been an ongoing problem, and they know about it. This is basically environmental racism, and the county has never cared about us black and poor people in Sarasota. And now, I come here representing Amarillo Park Neighborhood Association, because our president wasn't able to get here. And that's another, a whole nother thing. But I can't figure out why we moved all these meetings to daytime when people have to work and when we had moved it to the evening, so the people that had to work could come to these meetings. But that's a whole nother thing about how we in Sarasota don't respect people that work, don't build them houses, don't build them opportunities to participate in this process. But we need a class-action lawsuit that address this concern, and whoever the umbrella fits, they will just have to fall under it, because we have a situation around the African-American community. Myrtle Avenue, there is five or six construction dumping companies sitting right on top of the city of Sarasota borders, and the city does not care. The county does not care. They have been complaining about... There have been numerous opportunities to do something. I said it, this commission begging them not to put that metal recycling facility right there on Myrtle Avenue in Osprey. They did it anyway, because this commission, this community does not care, because long as the poison killing little black folks and old black women, it's all right in Sarasota. Now it done got this new swinging group into Central Coconut. I'm so glad to have y'all in this war, because it's been a war going on a long time in this neighborhood. Welcome to saving our lives. When y'all save y'all lives, maybe some of our kids won't have asthma in the next generation, because I have cousins that has asthma, I have nephews and grandnephews that has asthma that grew up right on Thirty-Sixth Street, across the street from Myrtle. So that's where we are. Booker High School has been inundated with the dirt and dust since they built in nineteen thirty-four.
Thank you. And you are... You're a city resident?
No.
Ms. Ramirez?
Good afternoon. My name is Lourdes Ramirez, and no, I'm not a city resident. I first heard about this a few weeks ago at a forum, and it really bothered me to hear that children was being exposed to all of that pollution. And I think what really hit me is that we, just a few years ago, you know, I was involved with a group of people, and I wasn't leading the group, but there was the celery fields. And this is what they were worried about, because they were putting a concrete, potential concrete crushing place near the celery fields, and they were afraid of this. And so when I heard this was happening, actually happening in a neighborhood, it really hit me pretty hard, and that's why I'm here today. I want you to really consider... I don't know how anyone can sleep at night knowing that children are breathing this. I have family members who have asthma, and I can't imagine the suffering that they're going through. going through. So it bothers me to no end. And I think this is a county-wide issue. I think all the neighborhoods should be getting together and supporting Central Coconut, because this is a problem that we should all be worried about, and about the children there. And I can also foresee, this is a liability issue for you as a city, for the county, and as well as for the owners. I mean, can you imagine the future commercials? Hi, do you live in Central Coconut? Do you suffer from COPD? Well, you may be entitled to compensation, and it's going to come back to you. It's going to happen. It's something that you have to really worry about. You know, so it's a liability, as well as the fact that you should always put the health and safety of our residents first, above anything else. That's the role of government. It's not ribbon-cutting. It's nothing like that. It's about the public safety. So I urge you to work with Sarasota County, make sure that, you know, they're, you know, putting their efforts into helping you and Central Coconut in resolving this issue. And, you know, I really hope the business owners listen, because I think it's something that we should all start working towards. So thank you so much for putting this on. Thank you for leading the effort.
Thank you. Mr. Costantino. And are you a city resident?
No.
Save the best for last. Well, you submitted your one card. I just got it. Can you say if you're a city resident before you begin?
Sure. I am a county resident, not a city resident. For the record, Mike Costantino and I have signed a card. It's been a long day, you know, and I think we all know I'm not always the most complimentary person from this side of the aisle, but it is a heck of a lot easier to sit on this side of the island, cast stones, than it is to be on that side of the island, receive them. So I acknowledge that. Been a long day for everybody, and it's funny, I kind of want to retract. My first speaking today was, you know, we have so many issues before the county that how in the heck can we sit up here and debate the logo? And after this last little round of stuff, it kind of makes me think, you know, maybe you make the logo, you know, we got number-one beach in America and the number-one asthma in Florida, you know? And I've just let that sink in for a minute, you know, is that really? And I think Lourdes brought it up. Great, that's not the legacy you guys want to have. Jen, I've been highly complimentary of you, and, you know, today is just a small example of the fact that you're a shining star up here, and I really appreciate the work that you did on the background of this. You're just phenomenal. As far as the, you know, it was kind of interesting to me a few minutes ago, I think we were all a little on edge and kind of uptight, when, when, was it, I can't remember, was it Lori or Emma, their video went on a little bit long, you know? And we're thinking, gosh, you know, make it stop. Well, think about those people, you know? They want to make it stop. You know, it was annoying to us to listen to a video for 15 seconds. They're there every single day, day in and day out, week in and week out, year in and year out. And I think that, or at least to me, I've heard a lot of great comments, a lot of great potential solutions. I believe that Mr. Loebek and others are absolutely correct about eminent domain. And not only there's a need from a health point of view, but I think that everybody on this board would probably agree that we have a huge need for affordable housing. And so I'm going to read to you from Florida statutes, Chapter 166.04151, Number 6. And it says that "A city may approve the development of housing that is affordable on any parcel zone for residential, commercial, or industrial use." So we don't have to go through any big land use changes or anything there. It's already right there in the statutes. And I would think that if someone would get John Thaxton on the phone, there's got to be people, I mean, a million and a half dollars, there's people that spit that out every single day, you know? Just look at all the buildings out there at Mot Marine. And just give these residents a break, give these kids a chance to grow up without breathing this toxic dust. And there seems to be a lot of win-wins that can happen sooner rather than later. Thank you very much for your time. It's been a long day, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Harkett?
Thank you. Thank you to everybody, and thank you, commissioners. I think we did hear some very interesting information, some good suggestions. And, you know, when I met with the county commissioners, the idea was to go to them to find solutions, to work together with the county. That suggestion was made. I don't, I don't know, you know... If you look in some of the backup material, it looks like this property, you know, has been on and off problematic over many, many, many years. I don't know what the opportunities are, but I think if we try to convince the county to join forces with them, to do something, that might be a good route. I don't know the legal details of eminent domain, Mr. Fournier. Potentially, you could let us know about that. I would like to hear more about the ideas of the zoning, Commissioner Brody, that you had. An injunction was thrown out there as well, asking the facility to enclose their functions is also another option. I think the city staff has suggested that. I'm not positive, Ms. Panica, if we have suggested that. I know we can't make them do it, but maybe that is a potential solution. Passing a resolution to us, to the county, asking them to do an inspection and another audit, and an audit of their own air inspection program? I don't know. I just, I really want to hear your thoughts on all of these ideas and what this commission thinks.
Commissioner Brody?
Thank you for all that have spoke on the issue. You know, I want to make sure that we think about it holistically, because it's not just that one property. It's the one on Myrtle as well, that we've heard a lot of complaints about over the years. And from what I'm hearing, I'm assuming it's the same owner?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
I don't know, though.
And the property on Myrtle is not in the city limits, so just keep that in mind.
But the question was, is it the same owner?
I do not believe it is.
I don't think so.
Okay. So, I mean, my thought is to, you know, I think the city attorney has heard all of the concerns and our concerns, and know that this, that we want to do something. We just need to know exactly what we can do legally. You know, I thought that there were a lot of good options, but we need to make sure that they're viable. So getting a memo to us that would kind of talk about the different options that were mentioned, and how viable they would be, chances of success and timeline. I mean, some of them, I was definitely thinking, okay, even if that is viable, you're talking years of litigation to come to any kind of resolution. I still feel like a coordinated voluntary effort is probably going to be the quickest, if that's even possible. The delegated authority issue is interesting to me, whether we can request that authority directly from the state to bypass the county, or if we can request it from the county. And even if so, what that would even, what that would allow us to do, I know we'd be able to do our own inspections, but what authority does that come with, even if we, you know, found something problematic? I think the zoning ish, I think, I think, like I said, I think that the most realistic, and I know some folks don't want to hear it, but the most realistic and quickest way is going to be negotiating with them, whether it's purchasing the property or doing some kind of a zoning change that would allow, with their willingness, to put it on the market, to sell it. Yeah, I mean, that's where I'm at. I just think we have to know, oh, and the other thing I wanted to mention is, if there's actual, if there's harm happening, and I think that you all, interested parties in the neighborhood, should think about consulting an attorney that does this kind of mass tort litigation. I have, it's not my area, I don't know what the possibilities are there, though, but we, as a city, don't have that kind of standing to, you know, do something like that, anyway.
Vice Mayor Patey?
Oh. For the record, eminent domain was my idea. But, yeah, I mean, you know, growing up over there, you know, I never even thought of that. You know, I used to play in that, run those hills back there with my friends and so on. And it wasn't nearly as bad as it is today, you know? Apparently, that problem has exasperated. And, you know, just so everyone knows, that the State Commissioner, Ahearn Khati, you know, put in a great deal of work and effort in this. And she says she's been on it for, what, two years now, or whatever? And it's tough, you know, for, that's why she came here in the diocese today, because it's tough to, you know, she can't talk to each one of us, you know? We have laws against that, so that, so it's not like none of us are concerned or haven't been concerned about it. But do know that we're going to explore every, in exhaust, every avenue, to try and bring some sort of healthy resolution to this, you know, through hell and high water. There's no reason whatsoever why you should be living like that, you know? I mean, it's sick just to even hear that. I couldn't even imagine waking up to that, or trying to go to sleep to that, you know? And I've spoken to Mrs. Akur about it a number of times. And, you know, you kind of feel helpless, you know? I mean, even, even with us, and, and whatever capacity of authority that we may have, and how limited it may be, or whatever, do know that we're concerned. And your testimony and all your comments, they mean a great deal, you know? They hit you right in the gut, you know? And, you know, I live right on Walker Circle myself, you know? So grew up in that neighborhood. And I hate to see the neighborhood that I grew up in, and knowing that there are children that still have to grow up there today, and didn't have to, I didn't have to deal with what it is they're dealing with today. I didn't grow up in what it is they're growing up in today. And as I said, you know, we got to do something, you know? I mean, whatever that might be, you know? So, but just know that we're going to do our best. All right? That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Commissioner Albert?
Just really quickly, because I think everybody's said everything already, but I have to say, seeing the video with the dust, I could literally, I think, smell the dust as I was watching that video, and I knew how, you know, that is just horrendous, and it just seems, seems to me that there has to be something that says that can't be allowed, that, you know, it makes no sense to me that environmentally, that should be something that's going on, and be something that, you know, somebody doesn't shut down in terms of the Environmental Protection Agency, somebody, this can't be possibly allowable. So, you know, I'll be interested to see what, if anything, we can do, because I think we have to do something, and we have to urge those who have the authority to do it, to do something.
Commissioners, I know we were very eager to say a lot of things, but we've already gone through twice.
I have an idea.
I'm going to go through four potential motions, and if we like the idea, we go with it, and we discuss it further then. If not, then we don't. But idea one, would be a motion to draft a letter to the Department of Environmental Protection, to the Attorney General, to the governor and the county, outlining the need for intervention and perhaps delegation of enforcement power. Number two, to motion to empower our leadership to negotiate with the owners of the U.S. recycling property to purchase the land, or proceed forward with eminent domain proceedings. Three, ask our city attorney for memorandum outlining the courses of action based on a nuisance, public or private. And number four would be direct staff to create an ordinance criminalizing or somehow penalizing this type of behavior.
Yeah, number three, again?
Number three, a memorandum, asking our city attorney to draft a memorandum outlining the causes of action that the city could potentially have or enforce based on a nuisance.
Why would you limit it to nuisance, though? I mean, I think you just open it to...
Okay, or that, or just any causes of action it might have. I'm very interested in the nuisance, though, but, yeah, that's a good point.
What, four again?
And then, four would be a direct staff to create an ordinance penalizing the behavior that's occurring over there, which I don't know how. So if anyone would like to make a motion, we can discuss it further.
Can I just add something?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so I had written down entering negotiations, and I agree with that. And could we add to your list a strongly worded resolution asking the county to inspect the property when the equipment is actually running, and to do an audit of their air inspection program? And you already mentioned eminent domain, and also potentially ask the staff to ask the property owner if they would enclose the facility?
Yes.
I think we can do all of those at the same time?
Now, can we... Commissioner Brody?
I mean, my preference is to let Mr. Fournier give us options that we may not even know we have, and to really do a full-throated review on what we can do and what the chances of success are before we just start picking them out of a lineup.
And can I ask one question? That may go to the motion as well?
Can we all speak to a motion? Can a motion be made, and then we can all discuss that? Commissioner Brody?
It's really two parts. I think that city manager's office should begin talking to the property owners about acquiring, this is a motion, about, about either acquiring the property or entering into zoning negotiations for the sale of the property. And the second part is to, and this is the stick part, is to charge the city attorney with bringing back all available options and their chances of, you know, fully inform us on the options and chances of success.
That's a motion.
Second...
I have a friendly amendment.
Sure.
The friendly amendment would include, draft the letter that you had mentioned, which was number one, and us also send a resolution to the county as well.
That's fine.
Okay. So an amended motion by Commissioner Brody.
Accept the amendment.
And a second by Commissioner Albert.
The letter is to who?
To the county.
Okay.
All right. Commissioners, oh, Vice Mayor, maker of the motion, did you want to say anything else?
Just to interpret that broadly, I mean, you've sat here and listened to all the things that we've talked about, and, I'll wait for Mr. Brown. Okay, interpret that broadly. You've heard all the conversations and the ideas. I think that the commission wants to be fully informed of every opportunity from, you know, small to big, and everything in between. And I'm just not ready, like, the letter about the delegating authority, I also think we need more information on, so if you could include...
Yeah, I think that's one of the things I would include. So you might want to hear how you do that, or, you know, what it would entail before asking for it.
Yeah. And I trust staff to bring us back some actionable options.
Any further discussion? Second to the motion, Vice Mayor Patey?
I just wanted to ask, what about the, you know, something was mentioned regarding hours of operation? When, like, saying that they operate late in the evening, and, I mean, can that be part of...
I think that's part of ordinances, or, and maybe that should perhaps be more broadly phrased to say any ordinance that would help address the situation than to, you know, make unlawful certain activities, but the ordinances that might be utilized to, you know, mitigate or help or eliminate certain noise, other things like that.
Very broad. Bring everything back.
Put a noise ordinance on it.
All right, Commissioner Harkett, are we ready to vote?
We are. Thank you all very much. We are, thank you all very much.
Let's have a vote. Commissioners? Commissioners, is that your vote? Passes you now.